Get our study session started. I'm standing in for President Hudson today. So President Hudson will probably know on Monday about the resolutions for item nine. Counselor Caldwell has item number 10. This is a Parks Department item. Is there someone here?
Afternoon, Chris Abbott from Parks Department. Item number 10 is an application agreement with the County of Anadaga for a grant program for up to $100,000 for facility improvements. Sorry, thank you. There we go.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
I have items 11 through 17. Items 11 and 12 will be discussed at executive session, so we'll go to item 13.
Good afternoon, councilors. Michael Collins, Commissioner of Neighborhood and Development. So we are looking to authorize another year of funding for the Financial Empowerment Center through American Rescue Plan Act. The continue to do an excellent job with not just actually hitting the goals that the Financial Empowerment Center has, specific to making sure that anybody that lives in the city of Syracuse has access to free financial counseling that is not tied to any product or sales. It's independent, it's operated by Home Headquarters. But right now they're tripling the amount of measurables that we've put in front of them. So the majority of this request, if you look at the two of them together, is to be able to contract with Home Headquarters, who is the agency that administers this for us. And the balance is for the city manager that oversees the program for the city.
A question, just historically. When did this start?
I believe it's been four years ago.
So it was funded from, by what?
Grant funds from, initially grant funds from the Cities for Financial Empowerment. Covered it for the first two years. Actually, sorry, about three years ago, sorry, we're going into the fourth year. And then, always with the intent that it would make its way into the city budget, we've been easing our way into that with using ARPA funds because so many of the people that we're able to work with have been, at some point, financially impacted by the pandemic.
So once ARPA goes away, it'll just go back solely into the city budget again?
Well, that would be a first, but yes, that's the plan. Because it had been fully covered by grant funds initially.
And supported by grants right in the year.
Well, so the grants have, we've run through all of those grants, and that's why this year has been the first year that we've been, that we've used ARPA. And so we're looking to extend that for one more year.
Other questions? Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, item 15. Commissioner OJ here.
Everybody's got the little time challenge today. You're not alone.
Thank you, councilors. Good afternoon, councilors. Matt OJ, Commissioner of Assessment. Item number 15, we're requesting authorization to commission another appraisal, this for three city-owned lots at Seymour and West Onadaga. Contemplating disposition, looking to get a market value attached to the property.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, item 16.
We have two amendments to the assessment roll to request, one for last year, one for this year. 220 South Gaddis is a neighborhood shopping plaza, and deserved exemption was applied for. Looking to get that actually applied to the rolls so that the property owner can benefit from the exemption. Gebhart was a situation in which a property owner is not hooked up, I believe, to sewer service, but had a sewer charge assessed nonetheless, so we're taking that off the roll.
Item 17.
We're requesting council authorization to enter into a short-term lease agreement with a user for the atrium space in City Hall Commons. As we move toward disposition of the property, A, this is a really exciting use, I think, but B, I think it's going to benefit the city operationally and also just small C-city to have an active use on the ground floor for a period as the property's in contract, which we anticipate happening by the end of the year.
Yes, I was going to ask, so this is for six months, and we think we'll close before then, or we won't?
I wouldn't get that far down the line. Don't want to get out over my skis.
So the Shosha Ma program, it's a one-year program. The series, as of now, has committed to six months, but the new owners, they are very interested in keeping the program.
That's, I just wanted to make sure to interfere with.
That's correct, yeah. Perspective purchasers are aware and excited.
Program is a national, Shosha Ma National Corporation, and it's going to bring a lot of good footprints to the downtown.
I think that's right.
So on that note, are we still transitioning the offices over to Park Place regardless of closing date or anything?
Yes, staff are making every possible effort toward physically moving later this year.
And so during the transition, we still, obviously, until we close with them, we still maintain that building, correct?
That's correct. Not to get too far down into the weeds, but this tenant will be occupying at least a portion of the ground floor. We'll still have a couple staff in the building, who will ultimately be moving to the third floor here. The remainder of the building will have our maintenance in it, but by and large will be mothballed.
Do we know how long it would, will remain basically vacant?
I think it's a little too soon to predict. Once we're in contract, I think the contract purchasers will have a better timeline in terms of financing.
Other questions? Thanks, Commissioner. Counselor Peniagua.
Good afternoon. I have item number 18. I saw, if there are no questions, we had a good meeting yesterday with Mr. Kaliba, and we talked about the Center State Program and how it would definitely benefit our employees here in City Hall. So if there's no other questions, let's ready.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Monto for Councilor Gathers.
Thank you, President Protam. I have items number 19 through 39 for Councilor Gathers. Item 19.
It was an Irish whisper, by the way.
Hi, Anne Fordak, First FD Commissioner, DPW. So this is for the slurry program. I believe we had a committee meeting and a public hearing on the subject. That's 19 and 20.
Public hearing is coming up.
Oh, that's right. Today? No.
Yeah, we did sidewalks.
I keep forgetting.
They get their own special attention. Principal Donham.
So, correct, there will be a public hearing on this subject, so we can get deeper into it.
Questions on 19 or 20? Okay, item 21.
So 21 is Rich DeVestie, our Director of Fleet Operations. He's going to join the Advisory Board for Samsara. Samsara is our GPS monitoring that goes into the trucks, so it's just a board position that you'd be approving.
22?
So this one is the use of $200,000 towards public education and outreach materials for the cart rollout. And that actually, is it just 22? It is. And so that's printed materials, the mailings, all the public education to the public.
What does that door-to-door look like?
Several targeted mailings.
Does that include delivering the carts to residences, that $200,000?
That is on the cart purchase. That cart company does that as a part of that. That was a separate purchase order, and item that we brought to council.
So does this use existing staff to do that education, or are we hiring somebody to do it?
It's a combination of materials, because we have Barton and Lou Judith as our contractor or consultant, but we also have the internal comms team. So we work together, and obviously, we don't let Barton and Lou just produce something. We have to approve it, edit it, and make sure comms approves of everything.
So are we paying Barton out of his $200,000, or is that?
No, this is just the, just the printed materials, like physical, like you have to buy paper, you have to mail it, you have to print on it, you know, all those related costs, which, you know, there's a lot of residents, so to do targeted mailings repeatedly, that's a lot.
Are you going to do stickers as well on the cans, like we talked about?
I do have some, so the can itself is going to say, like, what it's for, but that's actually molded into the plastic.
In English?
Because it's more icon-related, so that it's more non-specific. And the recycling carts, those are going to have more language, there's more to convey on recycling than there is trash, but we did some do's and don'ts on the trash carts itself, and it's, it's like permanently there. It's not like a decal you could rip off.
Will you have anything ready, like, for next week, or do you have anything that you use now?
Like, for you to see some of the materials? Yes.
Okay, awesome.
If you want to chime in on that.
We've, we've, Ruthne, Director of Communications and Marketing, we've already designed and laid out and are preparing to hit mailboxes with citywide notices around, around the change, and with the targeted pieces that are arriving for those who are in Phase One of the program. So those pieces are already ready to go, we could share those with you now. It's just, we have to produce, even when we produce those pieces in-house, we've got to buy paper, we've got to buy stock, we've got to buy ink, we've got to pay.
I was just wondering, because there's an event on the 25th in the south side corridor. It'd be great if we could distribute some there.
They're online, and we can find a way to get some material to you for that event.
So will the mailing go to the residents and the owner of the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, everyone has to know. One is to everyone, just so they, because they're going to see them, their neighbors getting them, and then there's one that's targeted to the specific people getting them and those specific owners, too.
And did we ever think about, like, because this is going to be a major change to the community for people that have never, thought of like a billboard?
Actually, I use the word billboard today, actually.
We have, we're trying to price out what will be left after all of our material costs to see what's available for us for things like, call that transportation advertising, things like billboards, buses, and bus shelters. Lamar has a program, they've worked with us in the past when we did census, so we got to see what the rest of the quotes look like for the, because we're doing a 20% now, so we got to see what the rest of quotes look like for the rest of the 80% of the city, and then we'll know how much we have left to work with.
Awesome. And my last thought would be, and I'm probably out of your head of this, but make sure that the schools know, so if the schools know, that, you know what I mean, it's like a whole education piece.
We are working on pieces that would go to schools and community centers, and our neighborhood planners have also asked for material to take with them when they're going into businesses and quarters.
Thank you. Item 23.
So this is sidewalks, and.
Here he comes.
This is regulation, they have to do this by regulation. Some material to do.
Good afternoon, Council, Neil Burke, DPW. 23 and 24 relate to city-owned sidewalks, which are things like Lot 3, the parking lot out here, these are areas that we have in a capital plan associated with them. And so this is for sidewalks, curbs, and corners where needed.
25?
25 relates to the fiber optic trunk replacement program. Fiber optic trunk serves a key purpose in our interconnected signal system, and allows the signals to communicate with DPW in our traffic management center. That program, that project is set to go out to bid this summer.
26 is with that one, right, Neil?
Yes.
Okay, 27?
Cantousley, Street Lighting Manager. I'm requesting $171,000 for lighting upgrades in the city parks as a capital improvement project. Passing around two photos that you can take a look at. One of the projects we're looking to do is add solar lighting in two different, at least in two different parks, First Ward Cemetery and the Ormon Spencer Dog Park. I met with this Farnock lighting group a couple weeks ago to discuss this. They have a proposal. Counselor Schultz was part of that walk-through up there. It seems like a good opportunity. The biggest thing with this solar lighting is the lack of major infrastructure work that we have to do. No trenching, no power, nothing to get to with National Grid involved, and the fact that these lights are about $4,500 apiece, we'll be able to put more in parks throughout the city this year. The other park that we're looking at upgrading is the lighting around Ahawatha Lake up at Anadaga Park, changing those out to the old, from the old high-pressure sodiums to new LEDs, and that type of fixture is the second page of that handout I gave you.
So this is phenomenal. I saw the email you sent me, which is great. My only concern is this, we're doing parks, and I think it's great, so I'm not against it, but what about the parks where neighborhoods are, right? So there's neighborhoods, and there are houses, and there's parks. So where we are, where are we at with that stage to get?
Yep, so I've reached out to Josh Wilcox over at Parks. We have, he's going to start working on a master plan for those areas that don't have any lighting. So those are the ones we're going to address first with the solar lighting. So hopefully, this will come to fruition. We'll install these internally. As it works, we will purchase more and then install these as we go forward.
Why did we pick those two parks?
When we started the process with parks back in, I think it was late fall, early winter of last year, those were the two that they've heard the most about. So when I presented this as a capital improvement project, I didn't want to go overboard because I assumed we were going to be doing a lot of digging, a lot of trenching, a lot of labor was going to be involved with what we were going to install. It was going to be those pedestal lights with aluminum lights, digging a trench to a nearest utility pole, installing all the conduit system, a lot of labor, a lot of material. This solar company came to me about a month and a half ago. So I had, I knew we had the project approved, but now it's a matter of having more money available because of what we don't have to do. So going forward, we'll purchase more lights than just those two parks, and we'll install them through Parks' input.
I can speak to the First Ward Park, too. I know that the Urban Forest Master Plan that was done a few years ago, they identified First Ward Park as a hotspot, given the proximity to Destiny, and that neighborhood really was suffering from not enough trees. So the Arbers did a big tree planting with EarthCore ended 2021, and they identified that park also as a hotspot for crime, because there was a lot of activity happening, because it's such a large parcel with poor lighting. So they installed the trees, and the next plan was lighting, and the Parks Department talked about lighting, but they talked about having to dig trenches and putting it in the center of the area, and it would cost money, so, or more money than the solar option would be. So they said they would test it in this park.
So I'm not against it. I've talked to them before, I'm not against it in parks, no, I'm totally, I'm just concerned about some of the hotspots in the neighborhood where parks are connected to neighborhoods, and it's dark, and constituents are really concerned about that. You've got McKinley Park, you've got Kirk Park, and you've got Mountain View.
So Kirk, so, got to cut you off, Counsel, but like Kirk Park, they'll all have the lighting around there. So that's part of the street lighting network that we purchased. Those are the ones on a wood pole. If you have parks that we're aware that don't have any lighting, shoot a list to me. I'll get with Parks to discuss it. Nothing's off the table. As I said, this, based on my contact with Anadaga County, they have, this company installed the ones along the pathway, along Anadaga Lake. The installation is easy, the cost is reasonable, and the more we can do, the more we can purchase, the better deal we'll get through this Farnock lighting. So instead of these two parks going forward, and that's not the only two parks I'm going to do, if I have six more parks that need some lights that don't have any, then we'll install those as well this summer. So I mean, I'll take any, anybody has a park that needs to be addressed, I'll take the list.
Kenny, I did copy, I believe, on an email I sent to the National Grid regarding the ballpark, because they got real issues out there as far as lighting goes, it's a county facility. I guess National Grid's lights up there are antiquated, they've been trying to replace them, but if you could lend your expertise out there, I really appreciate it. You're great at that, your stuff.
I'll talk to Chris Gorman about it.
Yeah, yeah, and if you could talk to your county contact, too.
Ken, how's the performance of these when the weather's cloudy? Does it still work okay?
So their report they gave to me shows that sunshine, they've got them all over Montreal, which is obviously similar weather to us. The counties had no problems, there's been some maintenance issues with them, they have upgraded them since those maintenance issues, they have not had an issue with them lighting throughout, throughout the year. So the battery life is extensive as well. With anything else, technology's increased, they have upgraded their technology as well.
So how far does 100,071 take you?
So when I originally did this summer, as I mentioned, there was a lot of work involved in regards to digging. So that 171 now, my guess is about 50,000 of it will be towards the Anadaga Lake fixtures and any changes that we have to do there. Those fixtures on the second page are about $2,000 apiece. They're old, they're going to be difficult to take off, the old ones, new ones will be easy. A sensor will go in there, we'll still be able to control those. The remainder of that money will go towards the purchase of these. So if you've got 120,000, say at 5,000 apiece, we're looking at 20, say, second argument, 20 additional solar fixtures that we can go, go with. So for this year, this isn't the last, we're going to do a parks improvement project.
Thank you.
Thank you. 29?
Item number 29 is a extension of an existing contract with Bergman Associates. They provide traffic and transportation engineering services for us. We are going to use their services in relation to the fiber optic trunk project that I came for earlier to provide construction and inspection throughout that process. Thank you.
30?
Good afternoon, councilors. Mary Robinson, City Engineer. Item 30 through 32 is the Outer Eastwood Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project. We're trying to get a grant, Clean Water Safe Revolving Fund, and in order to get the grant, we need to complete SEAKER, which is item 30, which is a Type 2 action, and then we also need to provide a bond ordinance. So item 31 and 32 is the bond ordinance for the total cost not to exceed $6,481,000, and then the project authorization.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you. 33 and 34, to upgrade our elevator, our main elevator, south side of the building, which is right outside the door, modernize it, make it look like the northern elevator. which is right outside the door, modernize it, make it look like the northern elevator, and make it code compliant. Although we won't be, it's not code compliant in terms of size, that would be a major undertaking. So that's requesting bond authorization and project authorization for $150,000. We have other existing elevator accounts that we're also using, so the total project's approximately $590,000.
Questions?
Do we have somebody that we use regularly to service these elevators?
Yes.
So there's no RFP involved or anything?
No, actually, I think it's a county contract that we're using, county or state, I'm not sure which.
Mary, do schools use the same person to inspect the elevators in the schools?
We used to use the same one, I'm not sure if we still do or not, I'd have to check with them.
Thank you. 36.
36 and 37, I was requesting $400,000 for the Anadaga Creek retaining wall, Walton Street to Fayette Street. There's also other existing capital accounts, we're asking for the remaining $400,000. So the total project's about $1.1 million. We're hoping to get this bid this summer.
Does that, does it have to come down and be rebuilt completely?
No, so we did the Walton Street Bridge project and built a retaining wall for a portion adjacent to the bridge, and the same was done on Fayette Street. So this will complete the wall along that creek bank where there's not currently a wall.
38.
38 and 39, you previously approved ARPA money for the DPW annexed building floor. I didn't realize that we had some additional ancillary work like repairs to the columns and walls, removing and replacing a knee wall and replacing the overhead doors, so I'm just adding that scope to the project, there's no change in cost, I just didn't include that in the original description.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Schultz?
Thank you, Councilor Green. I have item number 40. Neil?
Good to see you all again. Item number 40 is to enter into agreement with New York State DOT, this is an agreement that we have regularly ongoing, and that is to pay for staffing costs related to the traffic management center. Typically in the past, these would see a 20% local match. This current agreement has no local match, so we can say it's an improvement over years past.
And that traffic center, did that move recently, did you say?
No, so the traffic center, a lot of the items that I've brought up already are all sort of interrelated, so the trunk serves the signals which connect with the traffic center at DPW. This helps us pay for staffing of the traffic center, so a lot of traffic and fiber optic related projects on the board right now.
Any questions? Can I go back to 24 really quick? Quick question about the ADA corners.
Sure.
Do we always pay for those, or do we get outside federal state funding for those?
It depends. You know, if it's something like a recon project, we get that money back, but this is just so that we have funds available for city-owned parcels that wouldn't have a capital program associated with it.
City-owned makes a difference.
Is that what we normally bind for?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Schultz and Majek.
Item 41, we have a resolution.
I should just pull up a chair. Yeah, item 41 is a request for municipal home rule related to New York State Assembly bills, and this is a direct outcome of, and consistent with the prior unanimous resolution in support of the automated technologies for school zones, the red light cameras and the speed cameras.
Yes. Questions?
Let me add to more, I'll sign onto this, if you can co-sign for this.
Hope so, yes.
So items 42 and 43 are related, they're a letter for each type of technology.
43 is a bus stop arm program, which again is a related technology, however, is a little
more involved, seeing that the city school district is a player here, we'll enter into an agreement with them, their contractor, and whatever service we end up looking forward to.
Yay. Everybody's on board with all three?
All two.
All two, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hogan?
Thank you, President Protem. I had a special permit, I held this, but I talked to the people in the neighborhood and we're okay to go on. Do you have anything to say, Jeff?
I have no comment.
Thank you. 45 is advertised in public hearing for ReZone, June 7. 46 is a related adoption of the ReZone Syracuse City Rewrite Codification. Anybody have anything on that? You, you want anything on that, Jeff? Any questions? We got it from the Planning Commission. 47 is neighborhood business development.
Good afternoon, Councilors, Michelle Spansky, Deputy Commissioner of Neighborhood Development.
Excuse me, Michelle, I didn't need, I think we've been talking about Rezone for six years, so I don't think there's any more questions to ask about Rezone, actually.
I just giggled because you seemed so enthusiastic about it.
You know, after six years, I am very enthusiastic. Well, we're getting to finish, like.
We're on the three-year hard one.
I'm sorry, Deputy Commissioner, you can go ahead.
Item number 47 is to allocate 2 million of funds that had already been authorized under the 11 million ARPA infill housing allocation. This will go to support the Creekside Commons Project in conjunction with Housing Visions. It will result in 52 units of affordable rental housing, particularly prioritized along the locations that are listed here, West Anadaga Street, Shaward Street, West Beard Avenue, Midland Avenue and West Colvin. They are circled for you on the maps that have been provided. Any questions on this one?
Will this funding get the project started, or are they still looking to get additional funding from elsewhere?
The project is fully funded through a combination of sources, so this 2 million of ARPA is a portion of the city's contribution. We're also, we have a total of $5 million in the project through Home ARP and the city's home funds, then additional support through Lytech from the state.
Okay.
But the project is fully funded at this point.
We're looking forward to it. Thank you for all your work on this, too.
Yep, thank you.
Before we break, our first wild cooperation council, Mr. Berry here, I wanted, told me to remind everybody that we're going to have a committee meeting May 31 on Rezone 2, 10 o'clock in the morning. I'm looking forward to that, Councilor Allen, too.
Come with some more Peppa, you said.
Peppa, you said, that's all right.
And half more cookies, right?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor. Councilor Majek.
Thank you, Protem. Chief Schoff?
Morning, sir.
Hi.
48. 48 and 49 go together, bond ordinance and spend money for our capital improvement project to replace aging cops' cameras in an amount not to exceed $350,000.
How many?
350,000.
How many cameras, did you say?
Oh, it varies because this isn't earmarked for any specific cameras, we're going to go through and see which are the oldest, towards the end of life and replace it. Sometimes it's a camera, sometimes it's the radio it goes with, sometimes it's some of the affiliated hardware. So we'll try to get the best bang for the buck we can for it, but we're looking at some big projects coming up that are getting on the five-year-old mark and it's time to start replacing things as they're wearing out.
That's good. Any questions?
Can I ask, yeah, thank you. How did you arrive at the $350,000?
So we figured, we never used to budget for this, and then we got caught one time figuring where we're getting the money to fix this stuff, so we just incorporated it into our capital budget. So, I mean, we may not use it all, but I suspect we're going to use it all as we go along.
How about, what's the status of ordering new cameras versus ordering parts? Because I know that supply chain was affecting.
Part, for cameras that are on backorder and all that, the supply chain is done, we have parts for the cameras being fixed. This is for cameras to be replaced that are still kind of functional but need to be upgraded.
So there's no more delays on either?
I wouldn't say there's no more delays, but all the cameras that we have that are broken, we have the spare parts for them, so as the company does a workforce, IK Systems can get to them, and they work for us two days a week, they're doing replacements and repairs now.
Is this going to be throughout the city, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Just to identify which one is not working?
Yes.
Do you have a two-day work week, Chief?
That's what we can afford to pay them.
Okay, must be a good business to get in there.
I mean, we could, they would work five days a week for us if we could afford it.
I guess we'll have to wait.
What we used to do is we'd have a police officer that did that work, and under Chief Buckner, when we civilianize it, that's one of the positions that we civilianized.
But it's outsourced, you said, right? It's not our own employees doing that?
No.
MK?
IDK Systems, IK Systems. They're from, they're from the Rochester area.
Maybe you can employ Councilor Hogan, who will help.
I've always been good with technology.
You've got the stuff for 800, we're good, there.
Other questions? Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Councilor.
Thank you, I have item 50.
Good afternoon, Council, Jake Dishaw, Director of Code Enforcement. Item number 50 is a encroachment permission request for a four-foot picket fence at 600 Park Ave in the corner of Van Rensselaer.
I'm enthusiastically in favor of this, Councilor Allen.
Got you.
So I don't have any, I'm just reading through it, and like, transportation said it blocks the line of sight. What's the story with it? Why is it so necessary?
People like fences in certain areas of the city, they're cut through.
What's the question?
Sorry, we don't normally allow fences in front yards, right?
So, I mean, I can't tell you how many, but it's not rare for an encroachment request to put a fence. My understanding is the family that lives in this house has done a lot of work and they have three younger children, and they'd like to fence in the side yard with a four-foot picket fence.
In this area, Councilor, there's a lot of people that cut through yards, cut through onto streets and all that, so there's a continuing ask for fencing on this side.
And there's not room to keep it on their property?
So it's a corner property, so if you come off the side yard, I believe the right-of-way is about maybe 20-something feet. If they kept it on their property, they would only have a few feet off the side of their house, is my understanding.
Is it concerned about transportation as far as like people seeing it?
That's what it says.
Maybe.
That's what it says.
Senator Burke could comment on this.
Did you see the map where is that?
Yeah.
Is.
Is there any kind of problem here you think as far as transportation goes?
You know, we're willing to work with the applicant to address these types of issues. Departments provide comments on things like material, size, location, but we're always willing to work with the applicant to make sure that if there is a solution, we can find one, and I think that we can find one here. Thank you.
Mary, I'm good. I'm on.
Thanks, Councilor Majek.
Thank you, Protem. Item 51 and 52 are both resolutions. The first one is to honor Chad Norton. A lot of us know that Chad Norton has been involved with Webster Pond a lot, has done marvelous work down there with his dad, Bill, and all the Anglers out there, and this is such a great work that we are trying to do for him and just recognize him for all the work that he has been doing down there, and obviously the New York State Outdoorsman Hall of Fame is happening this Sunday for him, and as councilors, we just want to make sure we congratulate him on that, and like I said, if, you know, anybody that knows Chad, Chad do go out for those birds, and he's passionate and doing a lot for the neighborhood, and just happy to be able to recognize him for that, and wondering if my fellow councilors would join me in doing that for him. He's gonna, gonna try to get him here on Monday and be able to, he's able to say a few words, and just so excited for him. Any questions?
Any ones on board?
Everybody on board?
Yes.
Okay. The other resolution is very close to home to me, for me. As many of you know that I was born in the war and I grew up in war, and the war continued to persist in Sudan, both north and the south, and for some of you that are paying attention to the news, you know that there's currently a war going on in Sudan, and the same kind of war that split the country in half. And the country was split in half as a solution or somewhat a working solution to the longtime conflict, but obviously, as you know, if you follow the history of Sudan, that has not solved the problem, and to get to that point, it included a lot of international community to intervene and to do work and to African Union to show up and do some work. That has worked in the past, and this resolution is doing the same thing to encourage the international community, especially the United States, the Western countries, the African Union, to intervene again because the Sudanese people are losing lives every day. And I'm asking my fellow councilors to help me in encouraging our government and other good-hearted government in the world to join hands and help the Sudanese people come to ceasefire. And as you know, it has taken too many lives too long, and that's the point of this resolution, and hoping, any questions? Hoping that you guys join me in encouraging our federal representative to look into it and our president as well.
We're on board.
All right, thank you. That will do it.
Real motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.